I will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward Nebraska Government Body. The City of Seward adopted the Nebraska Omees Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Omees Act is displayed on the back wall by the door. A participant's signing sheet is also available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall acknowledge or raise your hand if you would like to speak on a particular item when we get to it, and then you'll be recognized when it's your turn to speak. You have to state your name and address for the clerk's record and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The City of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary. They may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Beck?
Here.
Hamper?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Holderman?
Here.
Wilkin?
Here.
Andres.
All right, the first item this evening is the draft minutes of October 6th, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second as we're in discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hamper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Wilson Carey.
The next five items consist of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second as we're in further discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hamper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Wilson Carey.
All right, next we have a public hearing. This is a 7:00 PM task increment financing application of Lavander Auto Body, 1778 Pine Street, Seward. We have our TIF attorney Andrew Willis here this evening to present. We have three, we actually have eight, five parts to this, to this item. So there's a presentation, actually three presentations and two resolutions. So Andrew, would you like to get us started on this?
Yes.
All right, welcome.
Council members, the project before you, Lavander Body Shop redevelopment project. Just as a, as we look at this procedurally, Planning Commission has recommended this at their October 12th meeting, and the CRA has approved and recommended approval of this project at their October 14th meeting. This project would be really the second redevelopment project in the Seward Rail Campus area. So the redevelopment plan has already included a lot of that rail campus material in it from projects from period the first time around. So this is the amendment to specifically identify this project. But again, it builds a lot on that, on what we all know as the focus of that redevelopment of that rail campus area. So looking at, well, the TIF application was submitted, and most of that information was put into the redevelopment plan amendment. So I'm going to go right into the amendment. Again, this project located in the rail campus area, 1778 Pine Street. It would be for the construction of an auto body shop repair shop. And again, this in the comprehensive plan, it's currently vacant, open space, and designated as future use as industrial, it's designated for commercial and industrial use. So this fits in very well with the plan. Obviously, the rail campus area has been a focus for redevelopment and strategic growth for bringing and writing industrial and commercial uses. And so in line with the comp plan, this fits in very well. The, as I mentioned, this would be a body shop automotive service center, approximately a 7,000 square foot building. Preliminary plans attached to the, you know, site plans attached to the redevelopment plan amendment. This would really be, construction would commence, you know, pretty much immediately, you know, 2020, and be completed really by January 2021. So 2020 would be the base, here would be a quick construction time, and then 2021 would be the effective date for TIF. Based on the preliminary assessment from the Seward County assessor, their preliminary appraisal they always give, the complete evaluation of this project would be $515,640. We're estimating the base value to be about $50,000 based on the purchase agreement that's in place. The city is not part of this, but that's, you know, obviously part of the overall project. Based on that, you know, with $50,000 base value and then $515,000 of total value, we give a hundred, it's going to yield about $121,000 in TIF. So that's the size of TIF we're talking about for this. Again, a project cost of over $500,000, and the developers identified over $178,000 in TIF uses. So plenty more TIF uses than there are, and the major one there is site acquisition and purchase price, as well as some grading and some prep work and then art inspection and any other needs. But again, well over the $121,000 in the, in TIF that will be issued for this project. The TIF application also included preliminary financing commitment contingent upon the TIF approval. And it's my understanding that this is more in line with you. So, you know, financing the overall project, but again, that lender is looking at this and saying they're looking at TIF as part of the overall financing, the equity went into it to get that loan. So that was included in the TIF materials, in the application materials, I should say. Our statutory elements that we look at for each project, again, from a property acquisition or disposal. This obviously is a city property, it's being sold, but that's being done through the normal city processes. So that's just noted in here. That's being done through, nothing, nothing actually transferred through this redevelopment agreement. That's a separate agreement, normal city processes. Again, the 7,000 square foot building on the approximately one acre lot. No issues from the land coverage aspect, no population density issues with the commercial project. Again, this is part of the overall building on the rail campus. So nothing but positive as far as, you know, traffic flow, street levels, the goal here is growth. So we're looking to build in that area out. Should be any issues there. From a zoning perspective, this is BP Business Park District, and so there, you know, a conditional use permit or change of zone is needed, and a conditional use permit has been applied for, it's in the process right now. Again, that's not part of this application at all, but noted here that that land use issue has to be addressed as part of this overall project. The cost benefit analysis, which is exhibited C to the plan amendment. Again, with a projected base value of $50,000, an overall value of a little over $515,000. We have incremental value for each year of $465,640. That translates to about $8,000 in tax increment each year for that 15-year period. Again, that's $121,000 over the 15-year period, and that will be used to pay for those, you know, making the site acquisition costs and that grading and elderment cost. Really, if I, you know, looking at this, there's not a lot, again, there's not a lot. Again, we're building off the rail campus plan, the redevelopment plan, information's already in there. I think the only thing that I would probably note a couple, is I know a couple things in the cost benefit analysis. Anticipating this will create four full-time jobs, competitive salaries and benefits at about $50,000 to $60,000. What they're looking at as far as the employment piece of this. I did note here that according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, occupational employment statistics, that the, what they call the location quotient for the employment of automotive service technicians and mechanics in this area is slightly below average. So again, it just looks like it's probably, you know, you can tell more of the actual need, but looking at statistically, at least there, you know, it does indicate that there's a need or at least below average from that look. And so really, again, looking at this mainly based on the rail campus information as part of the plan and building that out. Benefits outweighed the costs, and that's really the redevelopment plan amendment. I'd be happy to answer your questions, or I might just go through the redevelopment agreement as well when you can. And I'll change any questions that are.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
So pretty much building off the same thing, this form's going to look exactly the same as what you've seen in the past. So again, our effective date, January 1st, 2021. That'll be our first year that the taxes are divided. We have that minimum valuation of $515,640. So that's the minimum valuation that the project needs to assess to in order to yield the entire $121,000 in TIF. Although ultimately that's the rest from the redevelopment anyway, not of the city of the CRA, but that's the, that's the amounts we're looking at. Other than that, there's really nothing, this is pretty much the same form document. There isn't anything unusual to point out at all. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Andrew. Any questions for Andrew and the council this time?
Andrew, you kind of touched on it today, maybe I missed it the last flip of the page here. The pre-project assessed value determined, again, how?
It's a guess. I mean, essentially, no, it's based on the first square foot of the purchase price in the contract.
Okay.
Right, because, I mean, it was not even because that's, that's more, but it was based on.
Okay, you're asking like how the, how the lot was valued?
Yeah.
I mean, how do we?
The other lots in the area.
With the pre-project valuation, how do we come up with it?
That, that's county assessor.
And what will ultimately happen is the assessor will, they'll put a 2020 value on it, even though it doesn't mean, they will, they basically create a base value. So this is what we think they'll end up with because of the dollar per square foot on lots of general area land around here.
My curiosity obviously comes in from the standpoint that we have additional projects coming to the rail campus. Should we expect every lot out there is going to have a pre-project assessed value of 53?
Probably. I mean, I think yes. I think that's, you know, once, it's all going to be based on the assessor's. So that's the formula they're using here, I'd say yes.
Any other questions or comments for Andrew?
That is all I have. So what we need in the, what we need from the council is resolution to approve the plan amendment, and then if that's approved, then also one to approve the redevelopment.
Guys wanted to verify, so you've completed A, B, and C?
Yes, correct.
So it is a public hearing, so we'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing before we go on to the resolutions. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on item number one? Would you like to say something? You state your name and address, please.
Brian Lavander, 648 Linden Avenue, Grand Island, Nebraska. I started Lavander's in Grand Island in 97, and I've been working with the city since 2014 on this project. If you give a little scope on the heart of this. We recognize the need in your community. A while ago, we were waiting for this development to finish. It came, and as soon as it was ready, we were fully invested in the project. We have a track, a good track record with TIF in other communities. Our last project was in York. I think they're very happy with the sales tax dollars that we pulled into the community. I know you're giving out some tax base here, and that was brought up in some other meetings. But I think the wages and the sales tax dollars that you're going to see come back into your community that you're losing right now, I think will far outweigh the investment. It really, we really appreciate you guys considering our project.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, well, anyone else from the public wish to comment on item number one? Not seeing anyone else, and I'll go ahead and close the comment portion of the public hearing for item number one. The next item under one is item one D. This is a resolution approving the redevelopment amendment and adopting the cost benefit analysis for the redevelopment project. Andrew, did you want to add anything else?
Unless you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council, or would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Okay. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number 2020-39. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
A move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hamper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Wilson Carey.
All right, item one E is the second resolution in this item. This is approving the redevelopment plan agreement for a redevelopment project, including the issuance of TIF indebtedness for redevelopment project and other such actions under the community development law. Any other questions or comments from the council, or would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right, the resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number 2020-40. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hamper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Wilson Carey.
Thank you, thanks, Andrew. All right, next item, item number two. This is also a public hearing. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 2581 Bluff Road from Ag Agricultural Use District to R2 Residential Use District. Greg or Tim, Tim, would you like to take this one?
Yeah, that's fine. The last council meeting, you recall, Adam Greenquist rezoned from Ag to R2, and we created a spot zone problem within that district. We told you that this would be coming, that Tom G has stepped forward and asked to have his property zoned R2 as well. By doing so, we created contiguous R2 and then now fall within line of a contiguous district. With that, that's all there is to it. Planning Commission was unanimous recommendation, yes.
Are there any initial questions or comments from the council before I open the public comment? Seeing none at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion for item number two's public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on item number two? Not seeing anyone, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion for item number two. Does the council have any additional comments or questions? Or would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
All right. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map with the City of Seward, Nebraska, to rezone certain property within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Seward, Nebraska, now zoned Ag Agricultural District to R2 Urban Residential Moderate Density District, specifically tracts of land south of Bluff Road and east of Concordia College. To describe the property rezoned, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2020-25, and the title is hereby approved. Any motion to dispense with the statutory rule?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second.
I'm sorry, it was a motion and a second.
I was a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second as any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hamper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Wilson Carey.
This is ordinance number 2020-25. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second as any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, your ordinance number 2020-25 be finally passed and adopted. Please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hamper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Wilson Carey.
All right, our next item number three is also a public hearing. This is an ordinance approving the preliminary and final plat of Seward Rail Campus PUD first edition. Tim, did you want to take that as well?
Yeah, that's fine. This is a plat that you've already seen and approved several months ago. Since then, we've had some interest in the outlook to the south of the property, south of the Crick area. So Mike Owenby, the engineer redesigned the plat and broke those down into two separate lots. The overall legal description for the lot has not changed. Nothing's changed. The only thing that's changed is we split that outlot to the south of the property into two individual parcels. I forget what the lot numbers are offhand, so that they would be available for purchase to a party that was interested in them. That's the only thing that's changed on this plat. I take that back. We did put a drainage ditch in to the south of the Heath property as well. So there's an easement on there for that drainage ditch as well. But the overall perimeter of the plat has not changed.
Are there any questions or comments for Tim? All right, this is a public hearing, so open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on item number three? Not seeing anyone wishing to comment, then I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing for item number three. We turn to the council for any questions or comments, or if someone would like to introduce the ordinance.
Introduce your ordinance.
Okay.
We'll introduce.
That was my guess, yeah. Go ahead.
In ordinance to approve the final plat and pad of Seward Rail Campus PUD first edition as herein after set forth located in the southeast quarter of section 29, township 11, north range 3, east of the 6:00 PM, City of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for an effective date hereof, and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2020-26, and the title is hereby approved. Any motion to dispense with the statutory rule?
So move.
Sorry. We have a motion and a second as any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hamper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Wilson Carey.
Again, this is ordinance number 2020-26. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Second.
We have a motion and a second as any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, your ordinance number 2020-26 be finally passed and adopted. Please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hamper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Wilson Carey.
All right, next item number four is also a public hearing. This is an ordinance approving text amendment to the City of Seward Unified Land Development, Ordinance ULDO, Article 29, FP-FW floodplain floodway overlay district. Tim, did you want to comment?
Yeah. Did we want to, are we going to go ahead with public hearing on this?
Oh, yeah. We'll do, so a little bit of traffic for you, and Tim will discuss what happened at Planning and Zoning. As you know, we put first reading on there. Tim will talk about what happened. At Planning Commission, they made a specific request for an amendment that they wanted to review and see. It's not terribly in depth, but they actually wanted to see it, and Tim will talk about it. And so to allow Planning Commission to look at that and then give you a formal recommendation, but still pursue with our public hearing that we put out an ad for and notice in the paper and everything else, we'd like you to just do this one on first reading, and then by the time Planning Commission finished with, is with it, votes to recommend potentially to you, you'll have finished with third reading. We'll bring you the amended version. That's kind of the order of things. So we would just introduce the ordinance and do a first reading tonight. Tim will walk you through the ordinance itself and then get into the change that was recommended. Just be seen by Planning Commission.
All right. To start with, we added the state statute to the start of the ordinance defining why we have the ordinance. We've just kind of reordered some of the existing ordinance. The previous ordinance we had was several years old and fairly incomplete. So some of the big changes that we made going forward, the biggest is the designation of a floodplain administrator. It used to be the code official was the floodplain administrator. That's no longer the case. It was changed to, the administrator would be appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. Along with that, a list of prior, or a list of duties that go along with the floodplain administrator was added in there. The permit itself was changed to a floodplain development permit as opposed to just a basic permit. Let's see, we've added verbiage for whether a floodplain was in a top, or I'm sorry, development was entirely or partially in a floodplain, and the, the structure that goes along with that and defines that. And then we've also required flood data in order for your permit. You have, so that the zoning administrator can make an appropriate decision. Conditions and variances remains the same. Again, we just reordered it a little bit, changed a little bit of the verbiage. We did add enforcement to the ordinance for, as far as violations, notices, and penalties go. The old ordinance did not outweigh any of that. We added different definitions for the floodway and the floodplain, and laid out all the criteria that define those. We cleaned up the evaluation and requirements for floodproofing. We've got residential, non-residential, manufactured homes and existing structures identified in there. Big change is manufactured homes we have eliminated from the ordinance. It is no longer an allowed structure within the floodplain. The design standards have stayed the same. We did add replacement of sanitary sewer and additional utilities to the, the criteria. We added recreational vehicles and a definition for recreational vehicles that they must be licensed and movable. We added a section for amendments that the regulations, restrictions, and boundaries set forth in this code from time to time could be amended. And then definitions. We added 0.2% annual chance of flood, pertinent structures to the definition, base floods to the definition, changed the base flood to the definition. We added existing manufactured home park subdivision and expansion to an existing manufactured home park. We added the definition of flood and flood fringe. We also added a definition for historic structures. We added a definition for modular home and changed the definition for manufactured home. And let's see. The biggest thing, the Planning Commission, they agreed with all the changes too. With the, their biggest hangup was manufactured home and the definition or the lack thereof. We defined a manufactured home as a means or structure transportable in one or more sections, which is built on a permanent chassis and designed for use with or without a permanent foundation when attached to required utility. In the mind of the Planning Commission, they weren't sure what kind of home that was. In a sense, that's a mobile home. And so we added verbiage for the purpose of these provisions. A mobile home shall be considered a manufactured home. The term manufactured home does not include a modular home or a recreational vehicle. We then went on and defined a modular home, and modular home means a structure built off-site, transportable in one or more sections, which was built in an indoor factory setting to meet local building codes and is designed for use with a permanent foundation when attached to required utilities. So we went ahead and made that change. And then under the start of construction definition, there was a statement in there that allowed for the placement of a manufactured home on a foundation. Well, since we don't allow manufactured homes, we had to remove that statement from that definition. So those three changes, with those three changes, the Planning Commission, or that's what the Planning Commission asked of us, was those three last changes. Any questions?
Recreational vehicles, not all of those are licensable, and some of those that we knew, we do today require only a flag. So how does that work with recreational vehicles?
You need to redirect the definition of recreational vehicle first. Usually what we're thinking of there is traditionally your RVs and campers. And the reason that you want those to be licensed is because they need to be road-ready so that in case there is a flood event, you can hook them up and actually get them off the site and that they are road-ready.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
In the floodway, I don't want anybody to get confused and think we're like forcing everybody in the entire city to license their RVs and things like that. everybody in the entire city to license their RVs and things like that. It's if you're storing a vehicle that's an RV in the floodway or the flood fringe for some reason, they need to be road-ready and licensed because they have to be able to get out of there immediately if we have a flood event.
Any questions or comments from the council? This is a public hearing, so hold on to the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does anyone in the public wish to comment on item number four? Seeing no one, and I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing for item number four. Unless there's any other questions or comments at this time, I would, do we need someone to intro Kelly, do we need someone to introduce it and then do the reading? Is that the process? And then we're just having the first reading tonight. So unless there's any questions or comments from the council, someone like to introduce the ordinance, and then we can do the first reading this evening.
Oh, Andrew.
Okay. An ordinance to repeal or replace the municipal code of the city of Seward, Chapter four-ten, zoning and subdivision, Article twenty-nine F P slash F W floodplain floodway overlay district, repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. As it is the first reading this evening, so we will now go on to the next item unless there's anything else. Tim or Greg, we're good. All right, next item, this is a citizen request. This is a discussion of requests by Nancy Call, eighteen ninety-nine North Fourth Street, Seward, to adopt an ordinance mandating wearing facial masks and social distancing in pub in the public and all businesses in the city of Seward. And just to be clear, for the process is concerned, so at the end of the discussion this evening, if the council wanted to, they could direct the city attorney to draft the ordinance, and then it would come back at the next meeting for the council's consideration. So just procedurally, I want you to understand that process. So we have this discussion. Nancy, would you like, would you like to start?
Sure.
Welcome. Since we, I already stated your name and address, so I think you're covered.
Nancy Call, eighteen ninety-nine North Fourth Street, Seward, Nebraska. And I'm going to be have my back to most everybody, it looks like, but I think you can probably hear me anyway. COVID nineteen. Until about last January, we'd never heard of the disease. And when we did, we thought it was someplace we'd never heard of in China. But boy, did that change fast. We soon realized that we are connected worldwide in ways we never would have imagined. So where is COVID nineteen today? Well, here in Nebraska, we have fifty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-six cases of COVID nineteen. And yesterday, we had an additional seven hundred and forty-nine cases in the state of Nebraska. We have now the distinction of having the fifth highest rate of new infections in the United States. What an honor for our county to have. No, not county, state. Seward County has had four hundred and forty-two cases, and yesterday, we had thirty-three new ones. So we avoid. So why should you and I care? COVID nineteen's a nasty disease. Some people just have a high fever with chills and diarrhea and vomiting and vicious body aches. And others develop problems like pneumonia and trouble breathing. And some of those are put on a ventilator with the hope that their lungs will heal and they'll be able to breathe again. And others can't survive the disease, and they die. It's a relatively new disease. We don't know too much about it, but we've all been become familiar with the three Cs. Avoid closed spaces, avoid crowded places, and avoid close contact settings. We'll leave that one there for a minute first. So we avoid other people, like social distancing. We wear face masks to protect other peoples from getting our germs, but the masks that we there wear don't protect ourselves. You'd have to have the N ninety-five ones that the medical personnel wear in order for you to be safe. And we disinfect and all kinds of other things we do to try to keep from getting the disease. And I know we are tired of not doing things with our friends. And I know that masks are a royal pain, especially if you wear glasses and hearing aids, and they fog up constantly. And you can't have sports fans even watch our Huskers on game day in Memorial Stadium because we'd be too close to each other, not the recommended six feet distance. Our governor has chosen to restrict some things while ignoring others. Governors in other states have made wearing a mask a requirement when going into any business or to any other sports events, even outside, but not our governor. Now, even the President of the United States, Donald Trump, has the virus, and so do most of his aides and others that work closely with him. Lincoln and Allah have both passed directed health measures mandating the wearing of masks in all public situations. And I propose that the city of Seward do the same thing to help the spread of COVID nineteen throughout our city. We elected you to keep our community safe, and failing to pass such a measure is going against your civic duty as elected officials. So consider doing something to protect our citizens. Mandate the wearing of masks. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Any questions?
So this isn't, here's everyone else, this isn't a public hearing, but we will allow public comment on this item. I assume that's why at least some of you are here. Is he the guest?
Didn't the governor not mandate mask wearing? Because if they did, then all the businesses would lose their funding, that extra money that they were going to get.
I don't know who was recent D H, maybe that was the reason. I know that surely he had talked about counties and other places that were receiving funding would have potential.
Is that why Lincoln's mayor, she ensued or the mayor ensued because she mandated mask wearing? She's being sued.
That I don't know. I would defer to our legal, our city attorney on that matter. I don't know.
I don't know that for sure, but that's what I have for sure. It's true, absolutely. Terry Law Firm. Yep.
So, yeah, one second.
Mandate mask wearing, all businesses will lose their money.
One second, please. Bonnie?
Name and address.
Oh.
Julie McKeen. She mandated her own people.
And so as I was saying, we is not a public hearing, we will allow public comment this evening, so just raise your hand and I'll call on you and limit your comments to five minutes if you have any.
I have another comment, too. My husband and I have been all over. We went to Wyoming, we went to Montana, we've been all over. We've worn masks when we needed to, we've brushed our hands, we've been in public places. We've never gotten separate, been terrible. We've worn the masks when we felt we needed them, but we've never been mandated while we're out on the road anywhere to wear a mask. And we felt completely safe. We've always cleaned our hands when we got in the car. And I can't hardly wear a mask for than a few minutes because I'm asking. And I know a lot of women are people that cannot because it, they cannot get enough oxygen. So if you mandate mask wearing, it could hurt a lot of people that way. It also could cause bacterial pneumonia. And a lot of kids are getting at school infant taggo on their faces because of wearing masks. So I just don't think, I think people should have the freedom to choose. This is a free country.
Thank you. Yes, Nancy.
Wearing a mask has been implemented in almost every state by their governor, which keeps the people from having COVID nineteen. Obviously, we're number five now in the nation recently for new cases. And also, most ordinances or mandates that are written up give exceptions, right? And exceptions go along with the idea that if for a medical reason you can't wear a mask, you are forced to wear a mask. But then there's the rest of us that may have other conditions that if we have COVID nineteen, we would not make it. We would not be able to live. And so when I walked into my Walmart the other day, and a third of the people in the Seward Walmart were not wearing a mask, and I have diabetes, and diabetes are at a much higher risk of getting COVID nineteen, then I didn't even feel safe walking through the aisles of our Walmart store. Our Walmart store used to have signage all around it that said, please wear a mask. They used to have someone at the entrance to remind people that you probably need to put your mask on, and those things have all now disappeared. So my choice as a citizen of Seward is, especially since I'm recently widowed, I can't make the thirty-five, if you have the, if you have Walmart collect the groceries together for you, and they bring them out to your car, you have to have a minimum order of thirty-five dollars. And as a widow, one person, I can't come up with thirty-five dollars worth of groceries that I need. And so what do I do? I end up having to drive to Lincoln so that I can buy groceries and feel safe doing so. Because everywhere in Lincoln, you are required to wear a mask. Because they have, their city government, along with their county government, have determined that it's better to have masks and have some exceptions to the rule, but people feel safe at least shopping in Lincoln where I don't feel safe shopping in Seward with the conditions that I have.
Thank you, Nancy. And that was part of, that'll be your five minutes for this time. And so we're not going to go back and forth, so if anyone else would like to comment on this item, just let me know in the back. You state your name and address, please.
Christie Ideas, nineteen ninety Rainbow Avenue in Seward. First off, Governor Ricketts is against a mask mandate statewide and also with local governments and acting one. Yes, the city of Lincoln and the county health department there are being sued and the mayor by various businesses due to loss of income. I will start off by sharing the words of our governor that are in a recent letter I received from him. His words are, and I quote, "Throughout this pandemic, Nebraskans have taken personal responsibility for slowing the spread of coronavirus. It is not because of government mandates, but rather because of our common sense and desire to do the right thing. The goal of our efforts to slow the spread of the virus is to maintain capacity in our hospital system and ensure that anyone who needs medical attention can receive it. As part of our efforts, I have steered away from blanket mandates, including government-mandated mask wearing. I believe we should educate Nebraskans on all the tools we have to slow the spread and rely on them to use these tools. While I continue to urge Nebraskans to wear masks when they are out in public or go to the store to shop, I strongly disagree with the local government's decision to mandate a mask." Unquote. COVID nineteen is a virus. It's going to spread. Viruses do that. They have to run their course. The spikes in our country aren't anyone's fault. It is what it is, a virus. We can't run from it. We can't hide from it. It's going to find us even if we are wearing masks, staying behind plexiglass shields, or standing even six feet apart. Just because someone is scared of COVID nineteen, it's not constitutional to force everyone to lose their freedoms, to make those who are scared feel safe. If you're scared, it's your right to wear a mask, stay home, self-isolate, or take any other action you believe fit. It's not the government's job to protect my health. That's my job and mine alone. If governing officials feel it's their job to protect everyone's health, then why are they not making people eat more fruits and vegetables, consume a healthy diet, and get more regular exercise? On the risk dial, masks are suggested for those who are symptomatic, not for healthy people. And that's on all the colors except red. In the year nineteen eighteen during the Spanish flu pandemic, bacterial pneumonia was the predominant cause of death during this time, caused by wearing masks. Dr. Anthony Fauci even wrote a report on this. Many medical doctors are now warning that bacterial pneumonias are on the rise from wearing masks, and that's what a lot of the hospitalizations are right now. Businesses that were forced to close due to the D HMs at the beginning of this lost income that supported their owners and their employees. Some of those businesses have not returned to their pre-COVID financial state yet, and a mask mandate could hurt their business again, or worse yet, make it hard for them to stay open. Do we want to see even more empty storefronts in town? Businesses in town where there is a mask mandate have lost a huge amount of business. The owners have to constantly deal with the effects of loss of business and revenue and make the decisions of how to pay their employees. Can they afford to keep their employees? Can they keep their doors open? This affects every part of their life, and they constantly worry about how they're going to keep their business going and so much more. Businesses in this town that are already struggling from the previous D H M restrictions earlier in the pandemic will struggle even more if a mask mandate is put in place. Plus, the towns that have the mask mandates, their citizens are now traveling outside of those towns to do their shopping where there is not a mask mandate. They go out to eat, they do their shopping there, they'll even get their groceries there. And last, but certainly not least, those who can't wear a mask due to medical conditions, PTSD, or other reasons, are already being shamed in public places enough without a mask mandate. People in stores yell at us and call us stupid people, follow us around stores and continue saying things about us, harassing us, and much more. They don't care about the reasons why we aren't wearing a mask or that wearing a mask causes a severe health issue for us. We are shamed on Facebook and community groups, conversations, and other social media platforms. We're told we don't care about others and we're selfish. The truth is, we aren't selfish. We know the reason we can't wear a mask and what happens to us if we do. Try dealing with this every time you go out when there isn't a mask mandate in place. It will only be worse if a mandate is put in place.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this item? You already had your opportunity, so we will go on to someone else. I can barely see with my new glasses, but in the back. You can state your name and address, please.
Terry Hoffman, thirteen fifty-six Fairlight Avenue.
Should she come up?
If you may come up halfway and repeat your name, I don't believe the clerk caught it. Sorry. The acoustics in this room are not ideal.
Thirteen fifty-six Fairlight Avenue, Terry Hoffman.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Terry, and I own and operate T and G O Jeep, actually, it's T and G Cars and Jeep here in Seward. Twenty twenty was supposed to be a great year for me as I started carrying my own line of clothing. I invested a lot of money to fill my store full of women's clothing. However, COVID had a different plan. Like other businesses, my sales dropped to almost nothing. We got a website up as we had closed down for just a tad bit to get that website going because we didn't have a website up at that time. We got that going, and sales did come a little bit. But that barely paid the bills. Even after the hair salons, which they went through a lot, were allowed to open back up, business still in my store was still very slow. We never forced customers to wear a mask when they walked into our store. We would have customers ask us if they needed one, and we would say, it's your choice. You may wear one, but you don't have to. You may wear one, but you don't have to. A lot of the customers that did come in, they would actually appreciate that we didn't mandate that. I have had a lot of customers repeat that, and even in the last week's half. I have lost over $50,000 of revenue. Since COVID hit and people are just starting to finally come around and start shopping on a regular basis, I feel if you go back to a mask mandate, my sales will drop again and the possibility to cause a closure of my business, a dream that I have always wanted. There are already six empty storefronts on my block already. Please think long and hard about this and how it will affect the small businesses, the families, and how we go home every day. In Seward here, before you go on the masks, it's been a tough year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Yes, welcome.
I'd like to thank the city council and the other members of Seward, Seward County for being attendance tonight. My name is Braden Heine. My address is 3456 Braden Schobrooke, St. Lawrence. I am a parent of young children who are already enduring the mask mandate within the public school systems. This is something that not only they endure, but I also work within the public school system, so I am required to wear a mask as well. Speaking from a personal perspective, this has been a very challenging year for my children. My son has a history of separation anxiety caused from a car accident. This has only added to his instances of panic attacks. We, when this, when COVID hit and the schools shut down, we were unable to seek medical care for my son because everything was shut down. He at the time was just barely six years old, and communicating via Zoom with a healthcare provider is ineffective. So we worked with the school. Thankfully, we have an excellent guidance counselor at the elementary school who was able to help us get through that transition. I am 100% opposed to a mask mandate within the city of Seward.